Of the United States of America, through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see no public in here today for public discussion?
I do have a couple of things that I had text here. Brian, get it up. This is questions bring up in public discussions or anything the county can do. That supports the local fire department, right, which we're thankful for with the railroad situation. Leaving all the old ties along the tracks, which the area farmers want to burn, but once they jump into the railroad property and start burning, we cannot get to that much. When is the ground this? We had one in Valerio County today and it wasn't good. Sioux counties are the same predicament. If you follow the tracks east to west, ties piled all over the states. Responders away from jobs to battle something that should not be there. So you just want railroad ties piled along the tracks or a fire hazard.
There's nothing we can do. It's their ground.
Yes, sir.
They had three calls yesterday. Two EMS and one fire sergeant maintaining a real job to do this. Don't want to be vain, but I do. You get my girl, don't spend that so.
I'll have to send the railroad a bill.
Yeah. I told him I'd bring it up.
At least catch their attention anyways.
Any other things for public discussion? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three?
So I'm gonna.
By Whacter. Second by.
I'll second.
Stecker. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those. Motion carried. Oops. Still coming in. Okay. We have a handwritten claim. Claims. I'm reading. Oh yeah. I'm gonna let them look at the change for the vote.
Yeah.
And we'll cover your shelter and make it cook.
Yeah. Ready?
Yep.
Something terrible. Get great things today.
Yeah, I'm just running. Oh, yeah. Signs.
Let me know if we'll do this. Registration. What's on your? Yeah.
Yeah.
He was here.
Right for that conference. No, that was. Yeah, the picture was mad. Yeah, okay.
Thanks for turning off.
Yeah, I didn't realize what you were asking me. I got that.
It was so bad.
Sure, even as a truck too low. Yeah.
Yeah, I should remember again. We have to move your company meeting maybe for that grant.
He said it's true.
Uh, I think it did.
So you need these ones up?
Yeah.
Surprise paper.
Did hold all there.
But there you go.
For I believe seven dread. That really. So needs to be identified like that.
I think she will.
Yeah.
So it was.
Yeah, so that's what I need to find out. And then.
All three of the quarterly reports.
I feel that the only humans has to think of it. I should approve because. Um, don't stay. So I didn't tell her. It gets this in here.
Yeah, I'd seen that in there last night.
Year you're supposed to prepare for. Seems like this is a third one. Senior.
Maybe soon as long as I think. It can seem like a year that rotates.
Well, it starts at twenty-three, right?
Yeah.
Roll it back on, see what the last year is.
Last one quit at twenty-two.
Yeah, the other one. Twenty-two.
We had to date you, right? Wrong year.
Around. Okay.
That's the cars just add.
Yeah, it's just. It caught me too.
Always.
Yeah, I see. It's like, why would she need a full size? Okay.
Yeah, no, shoot it out of her truck.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Because it looks to me like it says twenty-sixty, so if it back in.
Can't be right.
So I don't know what that says.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four cents.
Ten years.
Eleven years.
Last of the year.
Twenty-three to thirty-four, that'd be eleven.
Yeah, eleven years. Yeah. This one's gonna be good until you guys are dead.
Hope not.
That's not that long.
Yeah.
I was wondering who was gonna say something.
I caught that right away.
No, it took a while for that to catch on.
I didn't take that long. That was a couple of seconds.
I can see the gears grinding though.
Yeah, I want anything to be close to retirement one day.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to make a motion to let the handwritten claims?
Some of us.
Carter?
I'll second.
Second by Stecker. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have in our packet.
Just the front page design, right, Tammy?
Yeah, just.
Oh, yeah.
We have the quarterly.
We weren't signing it before.
Quarterly reports and the auditor, recorder, sheriff and veteran affairs. Is there any discussion on any of the quarterly reports? Someone like a motion to approve the quarterly reports. Set Jack?
Yeah.
Second.
I'll second.
Carter? Sorry, we'll get one. Josh. Second by Josh. Any discussion on the quarterly reports? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those. Motion carried.
Also individual. Sheriff, he is, he is. He is what we sign as, we sign, try and see signs to know.
Yeah.
I asked him not to let you get signed in, so.
We're gonna do this later when Phil comes in too. Discussion on stick, please.
Yeah, we're not. He jumped me.
I'm, oh, I'm jumping with it. Yeah. Sorry, I gotta turn the page. We're gonna do economic development minutes.
No, it's time to date that the budget mentioned.
Yep. Yeah, yeah.
You're. You're ahead of it in your faculty.
Yeah, I know. Computers behind it. Everybody got it signed.
Yeah, Carter just brought it down to me.
Yeah, yeah. Next up on the agenda is budget and certification of tax by resolution four twenty-five twenty-three.
He did the setting.
Your budget amendment hearing.
I get on the wrong page.
Skip the page.
That's how I got on the wrong page.
Now you, did you put those in the wrong order?
I'll find out when I get.
That page will be at the bottom of the agenda.
Yeah, there we're at it. No, it's not.
They know, you're trying to drain it.
No, here, you're, you're a long ways ahead.
You find it.
We're trying to get, there we are. Yeah.
There you go.
There it is.
That's, well, that's what we're.
Yeah.
You're like twenty pages ahead.
Well, we're getting it done now.
Efficiency.
Yeah.
We'll have to have a discussion decision approved, the date and time for the FY twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget amendment hearing.
That's you guys an email yesterday with kind of a draft copy of the amendment. We've been working on that. I'm gonna send out another email to the department heads to make sure we're not missing anything. And then I just have to talk to Phil about if we need to set up a new account for the money for the grant. So otherwise, that's kind of where it's looking at. If you have any questions, let me know. Uh, but I'd like to set the date and time for May sixteenth.
I'll make that motion. That's the date time.
Second. Second by Carter. Again, the motion is set the date for the budget amendment hearing at May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at eight-thirty. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those. Motion carries unanimous. Ready? Next on the agenda is to approve the electoral officials compensation schedule by resolution four twenty-five twenty-three oh one. It's in your packet. Everybody had a chance to look at it. Any discussion on salaries? For elected officials? Anybody want to make a change in it? Now it's time to do it. Seeing none, who is going to make the motion to approve resolution four twenty-five twenty-three oh one? Carter? I need a second to that motion. I'll second. Whacter? Any discussion on salaries of elected officials? Seeing none. All votes, please.
Fine.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Derek?
No.
You voted for it in the first place.
I know. It can't be unanimous. We can't be unanimous, can we?
I wasn't gonna give you that hard of a time. Just wanted to remind you. Yeah.
You signed it under the name.
Oh, Roger, you signed it on the wrong side.
No, you signed it on the right side. You signed.
Roger, you voted that way. No, I was. You're not.
No.
Yeah. Yeah.
I did.
I did.
Put your initials.
Whiteout. Here's whiteout if you want.
Yeah, that'll probably be, oh, sorry, that was my bad. That probably would be a little better here.
Whiteout, also known as the interstate water.
Yeah. Yes, she did tell me.
Oh. Big one is theirs. I know, wasn't it? Yeah. We had gone to a train that morning and so we, Atlanta said, let's complain for news story.
She was so happy. She's got so much thing. I know, isn't it wonderful? She loves it. She loves it. So we went to her daughter. So wow, this are.
You're signing.
Yes, she is. It looks like it just.
Good catch.
Yeah, the rest of us would have to work it in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna really skip right over that.
Skip right over the most important thing today.
We got almost a ten minute break.
We wouldn't.
You talk so softly, nobody's hearing anything.
Oh, I need a microphone and a speaker.
When you give your husband, he'll return you back on him. Does he even hear?
He says he doesn't hear me. He's always saying bad. I don't tell him things, but he says, you said I talked too quiet. I think he's just badness.
Selective hearing.
No, my sister will not let anyone say selective hearing around her. It's selective listening.
Oh, yeah.
You hear everything. It's whether you listen to it or not. I've said that a number of times and she's called me all day.
Well, next time my wife accuses me of that, I'm gonna correct her on it.
You're gonna correct her?
You, you might for a different reason though. Exactly.
Hey, I, I thought she was expecting. The hormones are probably in a little bit more, you know, you might want to rethink what you do right now.
Yeah, she might want to be here.
Yeah.
Sleep with both eyes open instead of just.
Get a bottle of water.
I think I'm gonna hop off my MB thirty. We got too far here since we've got.
We got five minutes.
Fair. Seven, actually.
I'm gonna get one swallow of coffee.
Just one?
Speaking of green, like there's any cats. Yeah.
Off invitation to the.
And it's gonna have an end money.
It's Christmas. Oh, Christmas is dry. Yeah. I know, this is the.
But they, they have this.
Oh, there we go. Just show up and join.
Because of anybody, I was gonna, I have the invitation for the other one to ask you guys all.
Twenty-four. May. Yeah.
Cause I have, I put it in my folder to talk to you guys to do, so I can RSVP.
Oh. Gotcha.
So.
It's, it's. Not four, but I don't think it's a. There's a lot of congestion. Seven to nine. Five point six. Oh.
I hope that's. What did Dave, what's it?
Yeah, that's.
Oh, no, I won't be gone. I'm gone following.
And you can.
Oh, maybe if you want to put that down, I will be gone. First of August.
We.
I'll be gone.
Okay.
Sunday to Friday.
Play to go on.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll be gone that week.
Okay.
Yeah. I heard out of a hole with the auger up underneath.
Met a convention.
We can move it about this far. And continue my back.
Otherwise, I can come around every other day.
Took us.
I had some get a little bit wet the one time and I was. Once I stuck it out the corner of the rim, I had the bottom, the auger to actually grate to the center. And I didn't, took off rocking a couple of times.
I hooked the comb on, raised it up to the end, pulled it on.
Yikes.
Yeah, it will all data get.
Is that corns in twenty fifteen or what?
Oh, forty was quite.
You might have water. You have a transfer.
I'm saying. Transfer. Yards into.
Yeah.
I might as well up there.
Yeah, you got something leaking there. Yeah.
Should that, should that lab? Debbie's gonna be there, huh? During. Economic.
Oh, for that.
Let's try and be healthy. Get a water.
Yeah.
With the machine. Whenever I put. Every time it's the four oh one, then split the coin back down.
Okay.
So it wouldn't let me. Get a water.
Yeah.
It doesn't want to help people.
The co-op staff.
The wealth you said.
Yeah.
And I did the, the three tries. Even three tries.
We have employee, one employee that we were losing money on lottery tickets. And I said, there's no way you have losing money on the lottery. Yeah, so we went through the tapes and there was one cashier that was stealing. But she said, but I paid for the ones where I won.
Yeah, you know your guarantee of profit.
I couldn't leave it. She was talking with the sheriff on it and I said, oh my gosh.
That's, that's a sad excuse. I thought she could came up with something better than that. Gee.
Yeah, I'll never forget that. Honesty is the best policy. Yeah, if I wanna go there, he's.
Are you gonna put this on the calendar? I just threw it on mine too.
I'll put it on. To finalize ours and he's for the one coming today.
It's getting older.
That's a good.
We're, we're not there. I can read that. It is eight-thirty. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Jack, stop back there, talk to the. We got a lot of conversation.
Jack, it's eight thirty. I couldn't see through the pole again. It is eight thirty, I will need a motion to open the public hearing for that Y twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll go open it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Whacter. Through the roll call vote.
Everyone, we're gonna open the public hearing.
Class, math?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Darks?
Yes.
Would the auditor please do the budget presentation?
So, good morning and welcome to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget public hearing. Again, I'd like to thank Doug and Adam in the engineering office for ten past years, they helped put this presentation together. The auditor faculty gave them the information and they do the rest, so without them, this would be a much longer process for us, we really appreciate it. So, thank you and please thank Adam. So, I will start with, if you turn to the first page or after the introduction page. I'll start with our current fiscal year tax example. So, if you look at the pie graph on the left-hand side, it shows the property tax distribution from a property in City of Algonquin. Forty-six point nine percent of that tax goes to the city of Algonquin. Thirty-one point one percent goes to the county school. Fourteen point four percent goes to pursuit county. And the county trust receives four point four percent and the community college receives three point two percent. The pie graph on the right-hand side shows the property tax distribution from a property in Bird Township. Fifty-one point four percent goes to the county school. Thirty-two point four percent goes to pursuit county. Seven four, seven point five percent goes to the county trust. Five point four to community college and three point three to the township. You can turn to the next page. This next slide shows our revenue details for twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The numbers that I'll be going through are under budget twenty-three, twenty-four on the right-hand side. The tax levying on the property for twenty-three, twenty-four will be ten million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand fourteen dollars. Plus credit to taxpayers of three hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Which brings the net current property taxes to ten million four hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Towne's interest and cost on taxes of twenty-two thousand dollars. Other county taxes of seven thousand dollars. Local option taxes of one million one hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Fip tax revenue of one hundred and thirty thousand sixty-eight dollars. Utility replacement taxes five hundred and ninety-one thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Which brings the subtotal to one million nine hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Our general governmental revenue. Our state shared revenue six million one hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Our state replacements against other taxes of three hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Our other state tax replacements of eighty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Our state federal pass through revenues of seventy-five thousand dollars. Our contributions from other governmental units, three hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred dollars. State grants and entitlements of eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Our payment in lieu of taxes, eight thousand dollars, which brings the subtotal to seven million nine hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Our license that permits of twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars. Our charter school services, one million three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Use of untamed property, a hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars. Our miscellaneous, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, which brings our total revenues of two twenty-two million sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Other funding and sources, it is operating transferred income general basic of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars. From rural service and basic of two million five hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars. Which brings us that total to two million eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Press proceeds from general long-term debt of thirty-two thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. Proceeds from general face asset sales of thirty thousand dollars. Which brings total res- total revenue and other sources of twenty-five million thirty-one thousand two hundred and two dollars. And then if you add in the beginning fund balance from July first of twenty twenty-three of thirteen million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. Six hundred and sixty-nine dollars are total resources for fiscal year twenty-four, thirty-eight million two hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and seventy. Go on to the next page. I've been breaking down our expenditures by service area. The first service area that we're gonna cover is service area one, which is public safety and legal services. This includes ambulance, county attorney, district court, medical examiner and chair. And I'll just be reading the subtotals in huge category. Our law enforcement program expenditures will be three million six hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Our legal services program, six hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. Emergency services, two million fifty-six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Assistance to district court system, one thousand fifty dollars. Court proceedings program, twenty thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars. Juvenile justice administration program, thirty-one thousand, which brings our total public safety and legal services to six million four hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. We'll go on to the next page, which is service area three, fiscal health and social services. Which includes general assistance, industrial services, mental health and general basic, algebra, the energy unit, and fashion for babies. Our physical health services program budget for fiscal year twenty-four, one hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. Service to the poor program, ninety-three thousand fifty-six dollars. Services to military veterans program, one hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and nine dollars. Children and family services program, eight thousand dollars. Services to other adults program, fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Chemical dependency program, five thousand five hundred dollars. For our total physical health and social services budget, helping three hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. You remember, we no longer have service area four for mental health, we will go on to service areas six. Which is county environment and education. This includes conservation, nature center, affair, historical society, libraries and. Environmental, environmental quality program, thirty-one thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. Conservation and recreation services program, seven hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. County development program, two hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Educational services program, three hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. Which brings service areas six total to one million three hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-two thousand. The next slide is service area seven, which is roads and transportation. This includes the engineer and secondary road. Secondary roads administration and hearing program, nine hundred and sixteen thousand two dollars. Roadway maintenance program, five million five hundred and ninety-four thousand four hundred and ten dollars. General roadway expenditures program, three million eight hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Which brings the total for service area seven to ten million four hundred and two thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Service area six is government service to residents. Which includes elections, township clerks and trustees, reporter, treasurer. The representation service program, hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Bay administrative services, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Which brings the total to one million ninety-two thousand forty-six dollars. Service area nine is administration, which includes techniques, auditor, courthouse, election center, front door. Disturbians, I R E G I S, unemployment, EPA audit, supervisors and limit resource. The policy and administration program, one million six hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars. Central services program, one million three hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Risk management services program, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Which brings the total for service area nine to three million five hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety. Our last service area, service area euro, with our non-program expenditures, dispersment and other financing uses. This includes conservation, REAP, conservation reserve, crisis intervention, fancy, technical services, care team, IZAN, RSVP and tourism. For non-program current expenditures, fifty-seven thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. Capital projects, three million twelve thousand two hundred and two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Which brings the total expenditures to twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Two hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. Our operating transfers out will be two million eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. And our total ending fund balance on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, nine million ninety-six thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars. Which makes our total expenditures thirty-eight million two hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. If you go on to the next slide, I'm gonna break down the estimated revenue for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So, where does our revenue come from? Thirty-seven point three percent comes from our beginning balance. Twenty-nine point seven percent comes from our property tax. Twenty-two point five percent comes from intergovernmental sources. Five point four percent comes from other taxes, three point nine percent of charging service. Point seven percent miscellaneous and point five percent use of money. So, including the beginning fund balance, our total revenue thirty-five million three hundred and eighteen, eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Our estimated expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four on the next slide tells us where our money is going. So, twenty-nine point four percent goes to roads and transportation. Twenty-five point eight percent is our ending balance. Eighteen point three percent public safety, ten percent administration. Eight point seven percent non-programming capital projects. Three point seven county environment. Three point one government services. One percent health and social services, which brings our total expenditures to thirty-five million three hundred and eighteen thousand nine sixty-one dollars. Okay, so now I'm gonna break down our expenditure minus that new fund balance. So, if we take that new fund balance out, where does that leave us? Thirty-nine point seven percent goes to roads and transportation. Twenty-four point six public safety, thirteen point five to administration. Eleven point seven non-programming expenditures, five percent county environment. Four point two percent government services, one point three health and social services. Which brings our total expenditures without. Um, back to twenty-six million two hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and ninety. Estimated beginning balance for July third, twenty twenty-three. Equals thirteen million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Thirty-nine point eight percent secondary road. Thirty-five point four two zero general fund. Twenty-one point seven rural services. Three point eight zero in others. Um, which brings that estimated beginning balance to thirteen million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. On the next slide, our estimated ending balance on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, which is quite a long ways away. Equals nine million ninety-six thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars. Thirty-six point three seven percent in rural service. Thirty-five point five seven percent general fund. Twenty-five point two four percent secondary roads and two point eight two percent in others. In our next slide, I'm gonna be talking about tax levy examples for the city of Algonquin for the current fiscal year, which is twenty-two, twenty-three. This tax example shows a house assessed at under six thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Times the state rollback of point five four one three zero two equals a fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five thousand forty-one cents taxable valuation. Times a thirty-four point two seven, um, per thousand mileage rate equals one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and two cents. You subtract the home estate started of one hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. You get a net tax of one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-one cents. Of that eighteen thousand, or one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-one cents. Forty-six point eight eight percent goes to the city of Algonquin. Thirty-one point zero three percent goes to Algonquin schools. Nine point seven two percent goes to county general basic. Four point two zero goes to county general supplement. Three point two four to the community college. Colleges, three point one five to hospital. Point eight one percent to the expense. Point four nine percent county rural services. Point four seven percent A extension and point zero one percent state. Now, we'll look at a levy example for first township, Brigid Current. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We look at a hundred and sixty acres at one thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars an acre. Equals two hundred and twenty-seven thousand forty dollars. Assess value at point eight nine zero four one two zero state rollback. Equals two hundred and two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. You multiply that by the mileage rate of twenty dollars, point six three two zero three four thousand. You get four thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-five cents total tax. And subtract the egg land and family farm credit of two hundred and thirty-four dollars and four cents. You get a total net tax of three thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and. Of that net tax, fifty-one point five five goes to the school district. Sixteen point nine six, ninety-six goes to county general basic. Eight point four eight goes to county rural services. Six point nine eight goes to county general supplement. Five point three eight goes to the area colleges. Five point two three to the hospital. Three point two nine to the townships. One point three four to the assessor. Point seven eight A extension. Point zero one state. The last item that we're gonna talk about today on the last page. Is past current and proposed tax. So, our past tax example is for twenty-one, twenty-two. A rural property with a value of under ninety-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars. With a mileage rate of six point nine 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 one six per thousand dollars of valuation. Is figured to one thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Our current tax example for that same property. Rural property has a value of two hundred and two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars with a mileage rate of. Six point six nine zero five zero per thousand dollars of valuation. Is figured to one thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-four cents of tax. This is a decrease from the previous year of forty-one dollars and ninety percent. Which is a change of minus three point zero one percent. Now, if we go to our proposed tax example for twenty-three, twenty-four on that same property. A rural property will have a value of two hundred and eight thousand ninety-six dollars. With a mileage rate of seven point one six zero 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 per thousand dollars of valuation. Is figured to one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents of tax. This is the change from a previous year of a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents, which is a change of ten point one four percent. Now, if we go to a property in town, in the city of Algonquin. Was a value of fifty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. At a mileage rate of five point one seven nine six two per thousand dollars of valuation. Is figured to two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and. If you take that same property in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the value would be fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents. With a mileage rate of four point nine four zero six two per thousand dollars of valuation. Is figured to two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-four cents of tax. This is the change from the previous year of seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Which is a change of two point seven six percent. Now, if we go on that same property for fiscal year twenty-two or twenty-three, twenty-four. The rural, for that property in town will have a value of fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. With a mileage rate of five point five eight zero zero zero. Per thousand dollars of valuation. Which is figured to three hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents of tax. This is the change from the previous year of forty-six dollars and seventy-one cents, which is a change of sixteen point three five percent. And that finishes our presentation for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Any public comments? Any comments from the board? Can't see behind the pole, nobody raised their hand.
There and then I'd make motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second to close the public hearing? Stacker made the motion, Carter second. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Flash.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Well.
Yes. We are up to certification of the tax resolution number four twenty-five, twenty-three oh two for FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Again, the resolution number is four twenty-five, twenty-three oh two. I would need a motion to approve the resolution. I'll move to approve the resolution. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Stacker. Comments on the resolution number? Being none, do a roll call vote, please.
Flash.
Yes.
Nets.
Yes.
Whacker.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes. Motion carried unanimous. With approval, approval of public purpose economic development expenditures by resolution four twenty-five, twenty-three oh three. Do I have any questions on the proposed resolution of four twenty-five, twenty-three oh three? If not, I would need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'd move to approve it.
Motion by Stacker.
I'll second.
Second by Whacker, discussion. Being none, just do a roll call vote, please.
Flash.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whacker.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Yes. Next, I would need a motion to approve the paperwork and authorize the chair to sign the binder agreement.
Um. We got update for EMS on the agenda next.
Oh, do.
That's where, yeah.
Okay, I didn't move that to right order. Okay, discussion to approve sick leave for the city of Algonquin.
Yeah.
Bill EMS update. I got it. We're just all in wrong order today.
Update, um I didn't prepare anything for updates. I didn't realize it was not there till this morning. I put it off my agenda. Still working through the processes of making the change, and that's basically what's going on right now, so.
Everything working out?
Today's been so hard.
Good.
A lot of time issues this. Our challenge, getting all the parties together to get things accomplished, but we're working through those and making progress, so. Got a lot of things crossed off, but the list of things to do. Still plenty, plenty left. We're meeting tonight, uh by your council meetings till eight, five o'clock. Those are all in the public, so. And it's welcome to attend.
Anything on the agenda that's interesting?
Um, we're gonna go through those policies, fifty, eleven, forty, whatever.
Yeah.
Of them there is, um because trying to finish up on the getting stuff together for the hiring, advertising hiring the staff, so. Those are gonna be the two main things on the agenda for tonight. Have you started advertising yet or no? No, okay. I'm gonna get that done up this week um on the agenda today, and then tonight we'll kind of wrap up everything so we can get that published. Get together with Donna, so we start putting together packets to have for benefits for everybody.
Yep. We are up to Donna. The binder agreement.
Okay, we checked. Here's the final rates as we discussed last week. Average and signature paid for the binder agreement, send a watermark.
Send one more copy. There might be one, you can have another one.
I don't know, there's, there's two here. Roger, yeah, Roger's hiding two of them.
Yeah.
It's all good.
Anybody have any questions on the insurance rate? What we discussed at length.
So what, so how much are we going?
We did not change anything.
We, we set those rates during the budget.
Yeah. We didn't go up at all.
Yeah, we did go up.
Change, but the policy did not.
Policy did not change, but our budgets from last year to this fiscal year going forward will, will change.
Correct?
This is what we discussed last week as far as the overall policy. You set the rates that we were gonna budget.
Yeah, in February, March, we set those.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the paper work. And authorize the chair to sign the binder agreement. Carter? I have second.
I'll second.
Stacker seconds. Any discussion on it? Being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimous. You need to tell me to sign yet.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Got anything else on insurance, Donna?
Don't think so.
Evidently not.
So she's talking a tide on that, so.
Phil, this is back on the agenda again, sick leave from the city of Algonquin with the Sooth County EMS stand. I thought we had this settled once.
We did, but we tabled it.
We tabled the sick.
Cause you asked to send more information to the payroll attorney, uh which we did.
Yeah.
So we have to put back on the agenda to make final decisions, so we tabled that. The way I understood it, so. I know that was sent down. I haven't seen the emails or any correspondence from them.
Melissa's.
What's that?
Melissa's. Response from the payroll attorney.
I got one for the base scale, but not for the sick leave thing.
Well, we'll have to check, but she said that she sent it.
Hey, I know you guys had a phone call with them.
Yeah.
Um, Jack and I talked to the payroll attorney with the auditor and Melissa.
Did you guys have a phone call with him? I didn't.
Yeah.
I'll need to have a copy of the email at that point, so.
Yeah, it was, it highly unlikely ever that anybody's able to carry a sick leave over from one job to a different job, so. Jack, cause that's a general consensus that we got from him that he'd never heard of doing it before, so.
And we thought, you had like the bigger picture, and they're gonna pick up eight hours per month of sick leave. They're getting, they're probably getting better insurance plan than what they had before. Uh, they, they, their hearing, they bring their, I believe they're bringing in their vacation, right?
Yeah, up to forty hours, yeah, the handbook, yes.
Yeah. I mean, when you, you know, if you changed, it's a change, it's a job change, you know, if any of us went to a different job, we'd be faced with the same, same thing, I mean, that's just the is the fact.
Yeah. I would make a motion not to approve of sick leave being carried over from the city to the county.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had meant to call a payroll attorney yesterday, but had other things come up, so I was not able to, but yes, so with your description of the call, and I, I guess for me, the only way I see that we could do it is if it was paid by the city of Algonquin, so have you had any conversations with them?
They're they're not gonna pay out benefits, not payable.
Then, then I think our hands are tied that way.
Sometimes, even if they would, I think the city would have to pay it out in cash, and it wouldn't affect the county.
Exactly, that's, that's my point. It would, it would have to be a neutral effect on the county for us to take on that liability, I believe. And unless that happens, I don't see how we can. I don't either.
Any other discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Close, motion carried unanimous.
Excellent policies.
Yeah, I just had that down as a discussion. Uh, we're not ready to move on that yet. I did send you guys all a copy of the, of the policies we're gonna be reviewing tonight at the meeting. Um, I did divide those into three separate categories. The first category was state forms. Uh, our hands are pretty much tied on those, you know, following state guidelines, and those have to be reviewed by the state. So those have all been sent into the state for their approval. Uh, the second ones, as well as, is from the board of pharmacy, from the board of pharmacy, those have to be sent to the board pharmacy for approval, how we operate under board pharmacies, so basically those first two categories, uh, but not a lot of change we can do on those. Um, unless you see something that looks obviously wrong to the county, then we can, we can bring that up for discussion, and I can have a conversation with those parties to get it corrected appropriately. The last one is more of uh our personal policies that we have. I have talked to Donna on some of those. There is a couple of those that we may not continue to go forward with, cause my goal is to have as lined as much akin with the, with the county handbook, and not have separate policies in place. So there was one, was a return to work policy, and then there was another one that was registered intention that we'll probably pull out. Uh, I did already pull out a social media one that we had in place. Algonquin's, the city of Algonquin's handbook did address these policies very well, so we had our own EMS policies in place. As we didn't have anything, any guidelines to follow, so. So I did share the social media one with Derek. He's gonna incorporate that into his social media policy, a couple of things that we had that he didn't, so. We won't have a separate one there, and then the ones that Donna and I talked to as well. Probably all policy, and then a different, little bit of lineage in there, but we're gonna combine those, the rest of them, um, is kind of in-house policies that we have, and I don't like to overpolicy things, but there's times when you have to have some policies in place to, to stay efficient, so. I'm not gonna say that's the end of them, but um it's kind of our starting point for to get the system in place.
Well, it's nice that they match the handbook as close as possible to all the other policies that we have, cause we got so many policies that, we have policies on policies.
That's our goal, is to stay as close as we can with the handbook, and um there's a couple of things that we do different, you know, our, our crews come in, run twenty-four hour shifts, they're on their in-house, they're, you know, two, three days at a time, so we do have a visitor policy where we do allow families to come in and have a meal with them, or some stuff like that. So we did have to put a policy in place for that, because we did have a person that did abuse that a little bit, um, so we did have to put a policy in place to kind of correct those actions. On that person isn't with us anymore, but we're gonna keep policy in place, just in case you never go here. Have, so.
So today, we're not gonna act on anything.
No, those are what I'm hoping. We're gonna discuss those today, tonight at the meeting. Hopefully I can have those on the agenda for next Tuesday. Uh, we're, we're gonna get those finished up, so I can start getting signatures. Some of those state forms require signatures from all, all the communities in the county. So to get those approved, so I can start going around to the different communities, get all those signatures in place. I did share those with, with Todd as well.
Donna, you have anything?
Asked it yesterday. Agreement of keeping it simplified.
So tonight, you're going to act on it, at the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's gonna be on the agenda?
They, they've actually had it for a couple of weeks, or a week. They had a rough draft sent to them, so they had a rough draft.
Yeah.
They had some drafts, so hopefully it doesn't take us all night to go through this. We do have the, the first version of the um asset transfer and the, so some of the lease for the, for the buildings, well, we would get those tonight to try to.
I need to talk to you after seven or two, because I think there needs to be a slight change to the agreement, but the sublease and the signing leases, that's after I get it down on board to the board to.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Anything else on the subject?
Not today.
Not today? Then we'll jump to the next one.
We got Northern.
The Northern representative for.
I did, I did, I did include a copy of the, of the minutes from the Soy City Council meeting.
Yep.
Um, they had a first council meeting, they actually, if you remember, they appointed two people um to the board. So they went back and revisited the, the person that they had chosen to appoint it, uh, both in all of the second council meeting. Uh, they did not vote for the second person they had chose the first time, they just bypassed that, picked a third person, so. I guess this is what we have from now at this point. They either accepted or denied.
And the person is, for the record?
Uh, the person that was appointed, Lukey Koresh.
Anybody have any questions on the appointee before I take a motion?
I guess just for everyone's knowledge on this, at the last EMS meeting, the council member that was appointed here was in attendance in addition to the mayor, and sounded like they had gone through everything together, but the council had not voted for the mayor in the first motion here, it looks like, from the minutes, so I guess I don't, don't know what to think about that, but.
I guess it's not up to us, it's up to the city of Soy City, so.
Well, it is our final decision, but.
Yes, but we still have to respect the
Yeah.
wishes of Soy City. So I would entertain a motion to put Lukey Koresh as the EMS System Advisory Council member. Jack, would you make the motion? Flash, second. Whacker?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Keep us informed. Thank you, Phil, keep us informed. Next on the agenda is a discussion to approve the three-year contract with Cost Advisory Services. Inc. for FY twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thing we do every three years, it's the same company we use. Or I don't, I'm not sure how, but does something required?
I think they do about ninety-seven counties.
But they do the majority of the time.
Yeah.
I think I saw him here at ninety-three.
I just know from memory that they did ninety-seven. Anybody have any questions on the motion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Last second. Any discussion on the motion? Being it's a three-year contract, we'll do a whole poll vote.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion about supervisory meetings and mileage expenses and expenses going out of the county. Uh, we're gonna have to do a budget amendment, we're way over on expenses this year, so I thought we would have some discussion on it.
Four thousand eight hundred dollars.
Um, that's quite a bit over. In the past. When Jack and I were first on the board, if you were gonna go anywhere, it went to the full board and you voted on it, at least made a. Gentleman's agreement between the five of us that we were going to participate in something outside of the county. Uh, your thoughts?
Yeah, well, I made, I made the ball, could it just one trip that was made by. One member to Washington DC for over three thousand dollars. Has been showing if there's any value to the county taxpayers, spend that kind of money to go out there, has been anything reported that. Shows value to. To the, to the taxpayers, so. It's like we need to, we need to be responsible to our taxpayers and watch over spending. And some things like that, I just don't think are warranted.
I could make a suggestion, um. You know, as far as. We should all have the opportunity, and we do have the opportunity to. We need people to lobby federal government to go out to the state house to talk to our legislatures and all that sort of thing, um. However, I I think a suggestion I would have would be moving forward. Next year, say a board member would like to go to Washington DC or would like to go to the state house or something. Or, you know, I mean, we talked about ICAC conference or whatever it is, you know, um, I I think. To present something to do with, here's my approximate or my estimated cost of what this will be. Or for example, like, um, you know, when you had hotel last week, that was an out of ordinary thing. You know, nobody's gonna say, no, we won't allow that, but you know, just to, just to say, hey, I'm thinking about doing this. Or I'm thinking about going on a trip to DC and this is what I'd like to accomplish. And this is about how much it's gonna cost. How do you guys think, and and discuss it as a board, and then say, yeah, yeah, we'd like you to go ahead and do that, or, you know, maybe this. We should wait another year to do this, or whatever, you know, I I think it would be good to. It would, wouldn't uh. I guess wouldn't bring about as much confusion or as uh. Then we all know what's going on and nobody, everybody's on the same page that way, I I guess, does that make sense?
Well, I don't like supervisors doing the budget amendment on their own budget, we can't follow our own budget, there's something.
And and we do have a five thousand dollar spending limit for department heads, and we are department heads, and I understand that. Uh, but, you know, just, I I guess that's just my suggestion moving forward, maybe let's just discuss it all as a board and. Decide if that's something we wanna go ahead and do.
Well, the other thing is, we we act as one, we don't act individually. There's no decision made by any board member except in drainage that is really official. Cause we're supposed to be acting as a unit.
But I mean, this, as far as voting official, I mean, we can still go out and do things, and as a department head, you know, I would, we wouldn't make making the decision. On our own for anything, but.
Well, when it comes to spending money, we still should be cohesive and agree on it.
I guess I would go back to um, previous budgets where I have suggested we model what Clay County does. Where each supervisor comes up with their individual budget for the year. And then that gets combined into a total for the group, so they can choose what they anticipate going to. There's still flexibility if one does attend this or another doesn't attend that. But it would give each individual the opportunity to plan that out. And have that group conversation when we do set the budget, but that idea has been refused previously. And we just threw a lump sum together, um. I believe the year previous, we went over as well, um. Don't remember if we did a budget amendment for that, or if we just left it go over since it was within the service area.
We have to do the budget amendment to go over.
Only if you can go over for the line item, but not the service area, correct, Tammy?
Right, or or department.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I guess considering we just approved the budget for this next year. I would suggest we, any changes that are made, impact the following budget when we would have time to appropriately plan for that.
And that's true, I think that's a, I don't think it's a bad idea, I mean, and that's kind of what I'm saying, cause.
That's, that's what.
Here's, here's what I would like to do this year. You know, there's about what I'm planning, thinking of that's gonna cost, what do you guys think of this? Is this something we wanna pursue as a board, to have me go and do this, that's.
I still think if you're going to spend four thousand dollars as a board member, it should be okayed by the rest.
I think that's what we're saying, you know, this is what, as as part of the budget, this is what I'd like to do in the coming year. Um, you know, I'm going to Des Moines, I'm going to DC, I'm going to this conference or whatever, going to this meeting. And then we can either approve or not approve of that. I, I mean, we would still be approving as a board. The budget of our, what we'd like to do in the coming year and adjust accordingly, I I think that's fair.
And and that's where my point would be, that conversation should be during the budget process, um, we've got.
We probably missed that this year, but.
Exactly. We, these other departments that we need to do budget amendments for. Because their anticipated expenditures are going over those line items that were originally planned, I mean.
Yes.
How would you separate that from our line items? We've got hundreds of thousands of dollars in certain areas that are over their line items, so.
I I fully realize that, but you are setting an example for the rest of the county on how we operate and how we do our businesses. So I think we should do it as exactly as possible and expect that from the rest of the people that.
I I agree with that, but I would, I I think the time for that would be at the budget process.
We should have done.
We probably should set a dollar amount of the, you know, the maximum that supervisor can. Can, you know, spend on a, on a meeting or a trip. Yeah, and then if it if it's gonna be higher than that, then it has to come for the, to the entire board to, for approval.
I I think it's fairly clear that's targeting me, because I've gone outside of the state to. Multiple meetings, so.
I mean, good or bad, it's just kind of the reason that it is over, you know, I mean, I'm, I guess that's just a fact, but, but uh.
I'm not trying to target anybody, just saying that.
We need to go about it, right?
We need to go and follow our own advice for the rest of the county and and we all know the state is gonna pass the mandatory reduction. And what we can tax, and so how are we gonna pay for it?
That really a little bit helps, so, and I, yeah, I.
And we're supposed to set a good example for the rest of the counties, so that's just my speech.
Yep.
I don't know that we can act on anything today, but I would appreciate if you're gonna spend a lot of money, that you bring it to the board before you do it. That's my message.
In the coming year, at least make it a suggestion, here's what I'd like to do, and then in the following year, we can make that part of a budget if we'd like to do that.
And we have a gentleman's agreement on that, I I guess.
Yeah, that would be fair, and I, I believe my trip to DC was mentioned in the boardroom multiple times. I don't know if anyone ever asked for an estimated dollar amount, but that's something we can address moving forward.
That'd be good.
I didn't really wanna bring up any individual today, I just think that we need to have some. Foresight.
Oh, I agree.
And and hindsight on expenses that we bring to the board. If we can do that. As a gentleman's agreement, I would think that that would be sufficient for this year.
For sure.
And we'll let the record show that.
Doug, we're up to construction in the right away next, if you're ready. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Oscar.
Yeah, yeah, he just walked out.
I can't keep track of him today, he's hiding behind a pole on me and now he's laughing.
And this other one turned off, when the, when we turned the lights out, this one can't handle the dark apparently. The owl.
Oh.
Oh, he went out?
Yeah, that one's, that one's still going, I think we're fine.
Do you ever hear an owl hoot in the dark, usually it's in the, you know, dusk or dawn, well, apparently this one's afraid of the dark.
Evidently.
I guess.
Or it's just really tired in the dark. Yeah, cause that one's good, it's just this one lost the connection to it, maybe it's a barn owl and it likes the lights on.
Maybe.
The funny part is it's still showing you, it's still showing you.
Well, well, it's probably picking up on that one.
It'll just come from the other angle.
Cause it might, is it looking right at me or you now?
You, Kyle, and me.
Yeah.
Yeah, but is it, is it straight at him, is he looking at the camera?
It's hard to tell.
Yeah.
No.
Cause now if I'm, if I'm looking at this one. Now, you're gonna seize the sight. Does it work? It must be working.
No, it wasn't showing you, it was just showing, it wasn't showing your time, it's just showing yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
Morning, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
What a hoot.
What a joke.
My dad, I can have the dad chance.
Oh, maybe it died, just knock it off, knock it off. It's like, oh, it's dark, must be, yes, bedtime.
We need to kind of have a file now so that we can rely on. Yeah, why don't you, yeah, that'd be a good idea, very good, thank you.
We're playing with the owl right now, Doug, so, yeah, it died.
Evidently, it's just like waiting for you.
Doug, we are up to construction in the right away, and I believe there was some.
There, yeah, one request, actually, this is something that we talked about last year, last fall, Kenny Lubinfall. Bringing a tile from an outlet quite ways uh, north, and he is going, he, actually, it's gone through three hundred eighty street. We were waiting for some information on that, we received it, uh, talked with the board and board was comfortable giving a verbal. So this would just be a formal action, we'll be able to get Kenny paid for uh, the material and the labor and move forward.
So he brought a twenty-four through the row?
Um, there's two crossings, I believe, one is a. Twenty-four inch and one is an eighteen inch.
Oh, he did both of them?
There's two, yeah, there's two different separate crossings.
And you said you got all the paperwork now?
You making the motion, Mr. Stecker? Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Cardi, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Pose, motion carried unanimous.
That is all the road requests for road, working road right away that we have. Scotten?
With the county engineer and running administrator?
The bridge at Irvington now is complete, they have their guard rail on that. Uh, the proppers aren't still rock, but we hope to get those patched this year. Along with the other projects last year that be completed and are rocked. Uh, Mariners are working on their bridge, they actually have all the substructure completed now, so they'll be, they got one row of false work. Highly to drive and they'll be putting up their decking and getting ready for that part of that job. I want an airport expansion project, uh, that has been let on Friday. So I do not know, uh, I do not know the status of it, I think the city is scheduled to act on that. At their next council meeting, so. And we have a secondary road safety meeting on the first, and we still have two mechanics positions to fill. Today, uh, Blacktop Services Pratt filling south of Lone Rock. And they'll be in the northern end of the county filling some roads that can play in CO code. And that's all the road department information, and then we, uh, Tammy and I, by email, talked a little bit with Tim Whipple. Last week, Tim is not available today, but we will have it on the agenda next week. Um, is that something you would like to uh, have as a closed session?
I think that would be appropriate, because we are talking about going into a legal issue.
We put it on the boards agenda.
Please, I think we should.
Twenty-one five.
Anybody disagree with that?
No. And we're, Tammy and I will visit again by email, we'll make sure that Tim's comfortable with that as well, he'll give us some guidance.
He's gonna have to give us advice.
Yeah, yeah, his recommendation.
But uh, we just say ten o'clock, am I correct? I'm great, I'll, I'll review. Um, and that's all that I have.
Any discussion with Doug? On anything, I see they're re- recovering shoulders on the Plum Creek Road a little bit.
We are out doing some different uh, shoulder reclamation to both gravel and pavement, I'm just.
Uh, Doug, do you have any more of a status update on the mechanics position with any number of applications or?
I've received some applications, I don't know uh, exactly that number, but I'm reviewing them.
If there's nothing else for Doug, I think we can jump up to the brush control, we'll skip one. And we'll let him come up and introduce himself, means that we don't know.
But, yo, if you made it this far, you don't make it, or is it there? Yeah, I don't worry.
Just a minute, we're gonna wait for Marge to come out.
Yeah, I don't, I can then go ahead and introduce.
I'll say Reefer, Reefer, Don, my dad, so.
Very unexpected this year, but. Roger Jarks, Kyle Stecker.
How's it, nice to meet you.
Josh Waxer, Carter Nath, and Jack Plath.
Jack.
With me and, uh.
Well, yeah, sorry to hear about your dad, we always enjoyed him.
Yeah, he, he was, uh, quite the guy, he did this pretty well, so.
Yeah. We're gonna miss.
His last figure it out is all on me, so.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I don't know, be nice to work with everybody, continue doing the work that we do, so.
Rode a lot of miles with him looking at dredge ditch.
I believe it, I believe, I think he put on like fifty, sixty thousand miles a year in a truck, so.
Yeah, you know Marge.
I have met Marge like one time, okay, I've been talking to her on the.
Yeah. Through email.
Yep.
Talk to you later, Nate.
Yes.
Thanks.
Now, Nate, I think I've asked you. There's a Reefer that runs track.
Yeah, it was fun.
That and your boy?
Yeah.
Hopefully you run tracks this thing.
Not anymore. Not even close.
I heard his name on the hundred, hundred, two hundred meter, hundred meter.
Yeah, he did, they, uh, had a track last night out over there. They're out straight out so far, it's crazy.
Yeah. Anyway, I don't know, I hear his name on this, so now, you, you're, you also have another nephew that played football.
They both say, they both play football, uh, my boys in track and then my nephew, two of my nephews are wrestlers.
Yeah, so being a wrestling, I heard that.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, so. We are gonna, first thing on the agenda with brush control, I think we'll let you take off, however you wanna present it.
Well, like, like Doug done in the past, just doing rotation stuff, uh, I've just been going through the records and. Kinda keeping the, the bids the same as I noticed he did the year, the quotes the same, and you know, always come underneath that. Fairly easily, but, uh, what we got is just the list of ditches for what we did in twenty twenty. Which we're gonna do in twenty twenty-three, you know, uh, I brought the maps for it, they're kind of throughout the cen- center of Cassuth County. And, uh, I think there's one. The HK eight we do with Humble, so that only, you know, that only goes into Cassuth County a few miles down by Seneca. And my boys just done that with Humble. But, uh, other than that, I went and looked around and all of them, they all look pretty good, uh. There is one that is, be this number one fourteen. I know the last time that we had worked on it, I don't know if some of the guys in the past hadn't been going far enough. But like more toward the east end, it was pretty brushy, so. If it's still in pretty rough shape. We might kind of set that one and just specifically do that with like our folier based products, I think most of the other ones can all be do with. Uh, oil based, you know, done by hand throughout either, any time of the year, basically, so. Uh, yeah, other than that, unless there's other, any of these that plan on being worked on, like if they're gonna get dredged out or dipped or. Any plan like that?
So drain four would have the, approximately the lower half. Would have just been cleaned out, so there shouldn't be much of anything.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we'll probably crack it anyways, but if there isn't anything on there. Oh, yeah, yeah, down, just off a bag crop, yeah, I noticed they had pulled, pulled a bunch of that out, redid the bag on it.
You're, you're gonna go ten miles with nothing.
Yeah, it'll be south, south of Sway City where that's done, so.
So you'll have.
P thirty is the dividing line.
So a lot of that'll probably just be travel on it, I don't think there's much vegetation on it right now anyways.
There's nothing, we, we were wishing for vegetation on it.
I believe it, and that's a steep one there, I mean, I've had to walk it before, it's not very fun. But, uh, yeah, I can make a note of that, where if it, we don't even need to travel, we won't even waste the time doing that either.
No, I don't think you even.
I, I wouldn't waste your time.
Just go up north, hit the north end of it.
Start, start on, start at P thirty, south, south of Sway City, about mile and a half.
Okay.
And go up from there.
All right. Okay, yeah, other than that.
Marge, you got any?
One oh, one oh five has some clean out recently, but there. I mean, there could be some.
Probably still needs a tree, but, yeah.
And then, Kyle, you had those people that were requesting on Seneca thirty. Try eighty-four, I think Seneca thirty and thirty-two for brush control, I can send you the requests for that.
Yeah, that'll be a specific spot.
Yeah.
Okay, and you just want me to make it a quote for those ones to do and send it in, or just do them?
Just.
Well, you can just do them on the bill.
Yeah.
It'll be a different request.
Okay.
It'll, we'll, we'll do the paperwork a little bit different.
Which one is that exactly?
Um, it's in Seneca thirty, so I think it's try eighty-four, but I'll send you an email and say.
I think it's try eighty-four. Good, just give me a call when you go look at it, sure.
Yeah, just give me a location on that, I can get on thirteen, we can save the gun, go for it, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah. I can't think of any in the center part of the county that need, there's some on the north end that need a lot of maintenance.
Yeah, I think we're, the guys are finishing up up there, I think they just finished up. Uh, maybe a day or so ago, first Cassuth County for some stuff that we had already started last year.
Yeah.
They got that finished up just, uh. Just one day, actually, yesterday, I believe, so.
With a one sixty-five, we just took over.
Yeah.
One sixty-six, one sixty-six is the bigger one.
Right.
One sixty-five, we probably need to add that to the list because we are now responsible for it and we were not before.
But I don't know if you want to do it this year, we.
Yeah, this is pretty much like right up.
Just put it, put it on your, put it on your radar because.
What is it?
One sixty-five.
Yeah.
It's, it's a short one, but there's a lot of, a lot of trees.
Good.
And it might need attention this year, I, we probably should look at it.
Yeah, it almost needs to be cleared of its trees before we send him up there because it's.
Are they established?
Yeah, they're big stuff. It's gonna be a project.
One sixty-five.
I think it'll be more than what you want, we might have to get a contractor in to.
Yeah, probably, it's too big, we just create a bigger mess really.
Yeah, they're, so. They're twenty foot trees.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're already just getting dug out.
Yeah. At least cut it off, I don't.
Probably need to do a repair request on that then.
Yeah, we're gonna have to look at it.
And look at it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to put something to me, there's whatever you wanna list out extras, opposed aside from this, I'll get a chance to look at them and. Put a number on them and see what they can do with them.
Yeah, should. Well, we, we should probably look at that.
Yeah, but we, we can look at it, but I think we're going to end up having the informational meeting. With the landowners up there before we spend a ton of money and ask them if this is what they want, cuz they neglected us for twenty years.
Well, they turned it over to us, we have the responsibility, so. Pose requirement.
Yeah. Just don't want it all irritated right away.
Something go and cut it down, get some firewood.
Yeah. Anything else on any of those? You guys in the center part of the county, I can't think of anything.
I've had any complaints on my way.
Okay. We're, we'll two. Your quotes. The price sheet, any big changes on?
Uh, no, some of the, some chemicals have, but they're not stuff that we usually typically use under any ditches, but most of the stuff that we use on there is pretty much the same.
Do you, you guys, we got two new board members, would you like to explain what you use mostly on trees?
So like in the springtime and fall, like at the ends of summers, you know, beginning and the end of summer. We typically use like a basal bark treatment, which is a twenty percent mixture of element four and basal bark carrier. And that's applied at the stem of the trees, you know, eighteen inches from the ground on down. And then same products, different rate, we use a high volume. And you pretty much cover the whole tree, which is like your softer trees, I say, is like your plums, willows, sumac, elderberries, stuff like that. Then the, the twenty percent mix is for like your hardwood trees, like oaks, box elders, ash, you know, things along those lines. Uh, guys typically get down the drainage ditches and, uh, we use side by sides now, we used to use four wheelers, kinda getting away from that cuz. They're just not efficient, so side by sides can haul too many, plus a lot more product. And, uh, they typically have a tank in the back, sixty gallon tank, that's a high volume they use and we just. Transfer that out of a bigger unit and from the pickup and they just keep making their way down the bitches until they complete them. Anything that gets too big, you know, we'll either throw the bark or cut into the bark to get in the candy layer, make sure it dies. Uh, other than that, we'll spend evening to get sprayed. By the time they fall down, they're so brittle, they're just, there's nothing to them really, so they don't have a problem, they don't wash down the bank and. Jam things up, so it does a pretty good job, I mean, we've had a lot of years of using the exact same stuff, so.
What's the maximum size you go to for like the, the tree size before it's?
Typically like fifteen feet, you know, depending on the species, you know, you can get a twenty foot top wood that may only be, you know, six inches around, but. Depending on if it was made of mess or not, that's kind of what we go by, but typically like the fifteen foot range, so.
So basically just saplings?
Yeah.
Little bit bigger.
Anything that's like five, six years old, you know, I mean, mostly things are rotation, so anything that's on there. With any real size, it's been there for a reason, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Then in like midsummer, I guess we use water products, we use element, or not element, but, uh. Method and open site. One's a liquid, one's a powder, makes it in water, uh, the open site's like seven ounces per hundred gallons. And the method is twelve ounces per hundred gallons, mix that in with a surfactant, heavy ounces. And you just cover all the leaves on the trees and it doesn't hurt the grass, kills broadleaf. Doesn't leave a big stain anywhere, so we typically like to use that just cuz it's a lot cleaner, it doesn't smell, it's just. Overall, just easier to handle really, so. Two different ways of doing it, but basically that's how we do it across the board, really.
None of that really affects the crops or anything like that?
Uh, all of it can really damage beans, but, you know, all the guys are trying to spray away from crop and keep it at a minimum, you know. Uh, typically in Iowa, we try and do early application and late application. Cuz a lot of times we're not much for a buffer strip or any buffer strip at all. So either the crop is before or at a young age, or it's already ready to be.
Taken out.
Yeah, so, I mean, sometimes if we can get in there in the summertime, I mean. We practice, you know, safety, like we're, we don't wanna kill anybody's stuff, we don't wanna down over anybody's crop, we don't wanna damage anything. Whether it be spray in a drift form or just, you know, negligence, so. I mean, we've had in the past, you know, both the. You can't hold everybody's hand every day, so.
Right.
I don't know, but it could happen, but we try to keep it at a minimum.
Private contract, uh, farmers that have cows next to the ditch.
Uh. For the most part, yeah, like I'll contact the sheriff's department to let them know what area we'll be working in throughout the counties. And ob- obviously I'll let you guys know when we start and finish. But, uh, yeah, typically the farm, the landlords, there's, you know, half the time you don't know if they own the land that you're going across or not. I mean, I try to tell you, you know, our guys are informed to make contact if somebody's around, just to let you know what we're doing, what you're using. You know, contact information if they requested it.
Yeah, you're gonna have two or three places where they, cows.
Oh, for sure, yeah, and anything like that, anything that the guys come across, you know. After you open up the gate, you close the gate, you know, on your way in, on your way out. Something like that, you know, if you gotta go to a farmhouse and get in through there, which I just had to do the other day, or by, uh, or with. Talk to the guy, you know, the guy's been trying to skim across, you know, skim along the edge of the fence, I'm like. It's just an outback, you know, like I've done it for twenty some plus years, so it's like I'll just go to the house and be like, hey, can I get in there? Typically, there's no problem, you know, sometimes they'll say they don't wanna get in there and then. Reach out to whoever's in charge and let them know, and then you guys can reach out to them or however that will work, so. Communication is a, a must, so.
I was gonna say, there's a couple spots where there's. Pretty good sized trees on a couple drains, you know, old, old trees, but. You go in there, still kill off all the saplings and leave the establish.
Yeah, anything that's grown underneath like established trees, we just spray anything underneath, if it is something that's, it wouldn't. Really make any effect to spray if it was so thick, you know, that'll just be marked as a cut or to clean out, and then, you know, we would deal with that down the road.
Yeah.
So. Uh, sometimes like in the. Early spring, late fall, if there is a situation where we can spray it. With a foliar product to save some money, you know, we'll do that instead of going and dumping a bunch of oil product out there and. You know, costing a bunch of money, those things get marked and move back, they get marked down as foliar and go back and get those. Spots as needed, you know, whenever we can, when conditions are right, you know, so. That's one, one thing that we also try to do.
Seeing no further questions, would I have a motion to approve the quotes for BMW brush controls for the dredge ditches?
I'll second.
He made the motion.
Jack.
Zach.
Jack.
Last, Stecker, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Pose, motion carried unanimous. Thank you much.
Perfect.
We're gonna enjoy working with you, keep us informed on all those.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, it's going pretty good yet, it's just, uh, every day there's just, there's a new door to open, so. The guy with all the answers isn't around anymore, so.
Oh, wow, hanging there.
Guessing and a lot of flipping through old files and stuff like that, so. Everybody I've dealt with has been pretty helpful on the, on their end, so.
Good.
Marge, thank you for everything, for sure, and, uh, yeah, so you, that just, you're just gonna email that to me? Okay.
Exactly.
Perfect, yeah, and then the guys will probably be, will probably work on most of these late summer, or in fall. Once something changes and I run out of work. Hopefully not, but.
Yeah, hope you don't run out of work.
There's a bunch out there, it's just, we got all the equipment and we got the manpower, it's just how I have to do this part, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you're gonna figure out that this part is a lot worse than doing the physical part.
I always, I understood when my dad would just wanna get out of the office some days, so he just do laps in there, but.
Yeah.
Either way, somebody's gonna do it, not like doing the work, you know, you don't do a different job, so.
Yeah.
Hope you're around for a while.
Good.
Good.
All right.
Get that down, Marge. We will jump up to do drainage repair requests.
I think we're lucky one of them today.
Looks like that.
Yay.
These are all, see K F. You see that, I'm trying to figure out what K F stands for.
Initials.
Thought maybe it was Kickstagger or something like that.
Could be.
Yeah. Kickstart, kickstart, there you go.
Number sixteen is in Lincoln, section thirty from Daniel Binkin. Flag broken tile needs fixed, about a hundred feet east of the fence line. So guessing that's just a washout, get that checked out. Seventeen, um, I, we had discussed this last week, but I called down to have Melissa put the. Request, she wrote this up for me, uh, for reseeding drain four. I talked to Leon after our conversation and he said if we do it right away here with the project. He feels fairly comfortable that we can justify that to FEMA with. Picture showing that the seeding, the original seeding did not establish. So I spent a considerable amount of time checking with styers about flying on seed. And, um, we ended up applying that yesterday. I've got some photos I could share with you guys on the coverage, but I was out there, Nathan was out there, we were. Um, inspecting things as it flowed, as it was applied, made a few adjustments with the wind as the conditions. Were required, and, um, I'm fairly happy with how the application went. The only thing we have to wait for is to see what mother nature does, but. That was the only day they could apply in the near future with the wind conditions we had, so. Um, we had to act on it right away.
And that's pretty, it was pretty good for low wind.
It was calm in the morning, after lunch it picked up to probably about ten mile an hour, but they said they really couldn't. Couldn't accurately apply seed much above that, and all the other days look like they're gonna be a little breezier, so. Um, I can pull a picture real quick to show you guys that, but. Um, the number eighteen, last one is lead yard section nineteen, sinkhole for Kenny Louventhal. So. Says it's a pretty good sized one, so we'll get that checked out and repaired. That's the presence I have for today.
So what did it seed?
There's a waterway grass mixture, I mean, it's actually substantially less than what the. Um, engineer specs say, that was close to two hundred pounds per acre, but um. This is, we see this at fifty pounds per acre, which was. Twice the recommended rate of. Typical waterways, but they, they recommended the. Guy we talked to at Albert Lee Seed House had recommended bumping it to fifty because of the side slopes of the ditch and the application method, so. That's what we went with, um. Don't know exact cost, but with application and seed will probably be in the thirty thousand ballpark.
But with. It's, it's hard to beat that, I'd see that like.
Hydro seeding.
Cause when they did that, the main street there last year, and they put that on there, and I bet then. A week, the grass was, was growing ready, they named water or something.
The, the difference is when hydro seeding was applied on drain four last year. Some of the lower stuff took, it was shallower ditches, it was. Earlier in the season, so it was cooler, but the stuff that was applied mid to late summer when it was hot and dry, I mean. With the, with the drought levels we had, it, it, it dried out like that, it was, it was applied to spec, but we didn't have mother nature to cooperate, so that's why. We are pushing to do it early and upfront now, while we have conditions that will give it a chance to grow, so. Cross your finger and say a couple prayers on that one.
Well, I'll make the motion for supervisor Stecker to handle his repairs.
Second. I have a motion in the second for Mr. Stecker to hear his repair request. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post, motion carried unanimous. Anything else, Mark, on drainage?
Uh, that Walt Bradley email you sent out?
Yeah, do you remember anything about that? There was no decision made after, so did you get that?
Yeah, but I don't.
Well, I mean, those things are typically, you turn in.
Yeah.
And bill.
He didn't have an actual bill, he had an amount that was agreed upon.
I don't remember anything about.
Well, we. He didn't have a, he didn't have a bill, he didn't have a number, and then. It was after the thing's closed.
I mean, there's rules and.
Yeah, yeah.
How would we pay it? How would we pay it now?
We can't.
You can't go back.
Well, we don't even have a method to pay it now.
No.
It isn't part of the project.
I mean, gee. They, that's explained at those hearings and. It, you know, turn in the bill, this one has to be turned in and then, right, and you'll, it'll be taken care of, but if there wasn't. But it has been taken care of, that means there was never a bill submitted.
Well, the project closed.
Yeah.
So we can't, we're not gonna open up the project, pay a bill.
I don't, I don't know that there's a legal process to.
I don't either, I don't even know how we do it.
So I guess what you can do about it.
Well, there isn't.
It's uh, it's one of those things, it's, it's a lesson learned, so. You're gonna submit something?
There was an amount for the buffer that originally was, and I didn't pay that one, waiting to hear. What this one, so that one was approved, but I hadn't paid it because we're waiting for this other bill.
And that's different because it was submitted in time versus.
It went through the process.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe.
So I might go ahead and proceed to the one that was.
Yeah. That's fine.
Yeah.
Done properly.
Yeah, uh, because we don't even have a process to pay anything like that. Thank you, Mark, anything else regarding, I was gonna stop and talk to you after a bit about.
Yeah.
Lead yard, Mr. Stecker.
Yeah, we got it.
Is aware of it.
Okay, okay.
Roger's got his note, I got my note, we'll need to do a request for that.
If he, let me stop him.
Okay. Then Beavers moved again?
No, you, oh, somebody turned in tails, and I just found a location.
Oh.
Cause you have the drain, let's.
Scott, you in the right one?
No.
Okay.
There's no verified where it came from.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll.
And then, um.
I've got a form to turn in to you too, and I forgot it, I'll, I'll bring it.
And then the, the one oh five, they re-submitted and named the way, so that one's taken care of here on uh, Dave Rosen.
Oh, oh, yeah, yep, yep, yep.
Okay, so that one's done.
Well, the Beavers didn't, they, they didn't get trapped in the right spot then, huh?
I don't know if you're.
I, my darn Beavers.
Okay.
They just come out of nowhere.
They were probably trapped in the right spot, wandered off. I may be in later this afternoon.
Okay.
Well, so.
Okay, alright, okay.
Thank you, Mark, you're gonna send it up?
Yep.
Yeah, back in before we finish anything.
Does that mark the line down there resolved and see?
No.
Emails or whatever.
I, I emailed from Tom, but he's like, um, asking about the status of that, I, did you get the email I forwarded?
Right, and there's, really, they're going to park an ambulance, the extra ambulance in that building now. And use it for ambulance storage, so I think basically. We can't have stuff parked in that lot anymore, because there's gonna be an ambulance that's gonna go out of there on emergency calls.
Which ambulance is that? What's therapist?
The one that's in. Who you ask Phil, Phil told me they're parking one in there.
I'll, I'll have to ask him, that's news to me.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was told.
Cause Algonha has room for four down at the hospital.
Well, there's gonna be one in there, waiting to fill.
I guess I have to ask him.
In the training compounds? Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
I know they had, they had talked about that as a potential when we were looking at the building and stuff, but that was. Talked about to have it on the farther on the south side, where it could come out of that other door on cold storage, I believe, but.
Hmm, he said they're going to have it in the warm spot because it's going to be. All the equipment's going to be in there, it needs to be, so it has to be in the warm.
You don't want it freezing, yeah, yeah.
And the other thing is, is Chris is talking about something that fire departments want to use the. Whatever you call that trailer.
That big red trailer.
Yeah, and they're gonna leave it hooked up to the pickup if they can in the future, so that certain people can come take it out of there if there's a need for it.
So what's she gonna drive for a vehicle?
Uh, I'm gonna come to the board and ask for a different vehicle to be used for her. So who's ever, you're on that boat now.
Yeah, we got a meeting tonight, so.
So, I think things are changing, maybe we'll have to readdress what we think of that point in life. Okay. We are up to time with our auditor.
Uh, I have a couple things, um, next week. On the agenda for this event, we have, um, presenting some years of service awards. For Judy Sam for twenty-five years of service, and Elaine Davis for twenty years of service, she, she uh. Is retiring here, so we will. Yeah, so, um.
She's been here as long as you've been on.
May fourth, I have you guys down on the agenda, which is Thursday to meet with the department heads to talk about what house hours. Eating lunches, so.
On Thursday.
Um, next Thursday, that's the, the, the. Yep, I think I sent you guys any more, so, um.
Opening enrollment on Wednesday too, on.
Yep.
Yep.
Thursday at four.
Thursday at nine.
Thursday at four, nine, okay, I got it.
Yeah, okay.
Did it.
Um, and then for that opener enrollment, do we just gotta go to Donna's office, or is that?
Election.
Election set.
It's, um, it's like a presentation that we do every year.
And tonight for, for you old people, you can go to the sixty-five and older, older insurance.
I'll get right home.
I'll be there right away.
I think probably should, you're looking a little peakish.
I wish I was supposed to. So, um, I need to finalize our SVPs for the intern breakfast for Cassius Economic Development. Um, so, so far I have, um, Carter, Josh, Kai, team me going, I just still hope to attend. And, um, Jack and Roger, do you plan to attend? It's on May twenty-fourth, seven thirty to nine.
Yeah, I usually write everybody down, yeah.
Have you planned on going, Jack?
I know.
Okay.
I got intern breakfast seven thirty.
Yeah, you're right, okay, then I will finalize that R speaking for that, um. Thanks.
Don't forget Whipple at town hall next week.
Yeah, and I know. Doug and I will do an agenda request for that, but in those sessions, so, that'll be good. And yesterday we got a unique uh, situation, there was a lady who came to the treasurer's office, um, out of breath. But she had oxygen, and she has some serious health issues, and she needed a chair to sit down because she was out of breath. And so I went up and asked if she needed a wheelchair to go out because there's no way she was gonna make it back. So we were able to borrow a wheelchair that driver's license. Had and got her back up to a car, which made me think that it would be nice if we had a wheelchair available for those types of situations. Because we do have a lot of people who come in to pay their taxes or get their dri- driver's license or their tags or whatever, and it's a long. Even if they use the elevator, it's a long ways for them to walk. So I talked to Donna Nielsen to see if she was aware of anything, and she said to call them and send them to the BFW that. They, she knows that they loan somehow, but even if he doesn't have any, he might be able to direct me in the right direction to get something. You, you won't have to have anything new, but I wanted to see what your guys' thoughts were, and if you have any ideas of, of. Maybe what.
Could potentially talk to the hospital too, um. They may have some extras available.
Well, sometimes they have a chair that's better than a wheelchair, or.
We should ask Phil too, he might know something.
And if we're gonna have um, a wheelchair available, maybe we put a post that on. The front door, because if they come in the front door with the wheelchair, well, they got stairs to go down and up, so maybe. Say, you know, wheelchair accessible in the rear, you know, something like that, and then. Stage that wheelchair inside that, inside the double doors there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Around the corner, slide the bench over further or something, so you don't have to walk around it.
But that double door is wide enough, I think we could stage one in there.
And I know that, uh.
Cause they fold, they flop so, so.
Said driver's license has one?
Yes, they have one in the back that they use.
Why not just set that one?
Well, I thought about that, but then I thought, well. Then what happens if they need it for some, you know, I mean, i- if it, it doesn't hurt to have two, one that we keep back there and one that we use on a regular basis. For people coming in and out, that one's kind of for. Situations, I, I mean, I don't think they want it sitting out all the time for people to use, I think we need to get something extra to use. I, I mean, I don't wanna spend a lot of money, I just think it'd be nice to have one sitting there at all times.
Yeah, maybe the hospital itself, they use one.
Yeah. So even if somebody.
Figure if they have one set down there. Just set that one out there, we're gonna set one out, just set that one out.
I can ask them what they think about that.
Yeah.
It wouldn't hurt to have two, I mean, well, you never know, there might be a situation where someone does need it, someone else has it, and they're. On it, you can't really just say, hey, stayed up, we need that wheelchair, so.
Well, my thought is, if it's there, people are gonna use it, so, where if it's not, they might walk, so I think if you have one sitting there, they're gonna use it more often. You know, just my thought.
Or down in the basement.
Yeah, I see what you come up with and let us know.
Okay, let me do that, and, and like I said.
Options, yeah.
Don't wanna spend a lot of money, I think I just thought, anything we can do to help accessibility for the public would, would be nice, this.
There might be, there might be some grants or something for accessibility.
Yeah, the lady was very appreciative, and she, she didn't even say it would be nice if I knew that there was a wheelchair here for me to use. So, um, and that's.
You know, if they were high on drugs and needed a wheelchair, we could use the drug money.
And how are you gonna determine that?
That's a, that's a creative.
Aren't you saying proposal?
Well, I think at that point, they wouldn't need the wheelchair, we could just have the sheriff come drag them out.
Well, you never know, they might be wanting to pay their taxes or something, or we wanna drag them out.
Well, the sheriff holds them up while they're paying their taxes, then drag, drag them out, that's.
So, um, and I think that is, uh. I'm glad to have the budget, then.
Good.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good reading.
Another year?
Another year.
Go through your binder for Whipple for next week, for discussion on. I highlighted a bunch of things in mine when I read through it, I kinda questioned how we interpreted some of the things. There.
And I did.
Kinda written in lawyer language.
I did give you all the copies from Jack, the public.
Right.
So you should have that to add to. And I will send a copy of that to Tim and email a copy of that to.
Do we need to add something on the agenda for that for next week, so we can get that back in?
I think we already agreed that it would be put in there once we got it signed, I think.
That was the, that was the agreement, once it was signed, it would be into the.
Yeah.
Okay.
But this, and this kinda talks about the potential risk or concerns related to.
Van Tager just wanna put in there the thousand feet, she's, I, I don't know, what do, what do we have to? Says a thousand feet exact here, so I said, that's fine, it doesn't. You don't feel comfortable, then you just take that last line out.
I mean, I can add it to the agenda if you think I should do it.
I don't think we do, cause we already, cause it, we already said we'll put it back in once, once I've got the board making improvements.
Part of the recommendations, yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
So, it, yeah, it'll, I would say it'll be addressed in the process of the order.
I just wanted to make sure that was covered, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Good.
Good.
Good point.
Yeah.
Nothing else?
Nothing, no.
Busy week next week or not?
Um, just. The, you meeting with the department heads and the. Year's service awards, that's all I have so far.
And Whipple.
And Whipple, yeah. Put that on there.
Don't squeeze the shot on me.
Jack. Um, at the board health meetings, um. Spend some time talking about the pipeline, um. Over there and getting that approved, where it put back in the book. Um, and just had some other updates. Grant updates and budget amendments. There is a new vaccine available for COVID, uh. They aren't recommending it really for people under sixty-five, unless you have underlying health. Problems, uh, sixty-five older, uh, yes, they say you can't get it. Uh, but. Got a lot of access, really, and people get it, but it has to be four months since your last shot for to get it. So, you know, I mean, really, they're not really pushing it this way.
Yeah, I'm more worried about the next one.
Yeah. Anyway, that's the other guy we talked about.
Carter, you got anything?
I, uh, carried connections this afternoon, otherwise. Had some other drainage and. Some other stuff to take care of this week, so.
Josh?
Uh, nothing last week, but there you go, several. Um, we got the Cassius Paltor Economic Development, three o'clock, um, emergency management, six o'clock, and then. The E nine one one. The E nine and one following the emergency management, so. Got a few tonight.
I did go to the first part of the safety meeting Friday.
Stecker?
EMS at five is still already highlighted, um. As Carter just touched on, the secondary road safety meeting, last Friday, I was able to be there for the whole thing. There's, there's a significant concern. About equipment, I would say in the conversations, um. Met with our mechanic foreman here yesterday, and I'm hoping to visit with Doug after the meeting. Here today, but, um. I think we probably need to put a little more emphasis than we previously have on some of the. Issues we've got going on there right now, so. Hopefully we can make some progress in getting caught up and moving forward, but. That's, I think that's all I got, besides stuff that was already talked about, so.
Yes, I. Question why you would meet with a mechanic when he's not, he's Doug's report, not ours.
I asked, wanted to talk to him about some of the equipment and stuff, and I'll talk to Doug after that, so.
It, uh, you don't wanna. Make anybody that's in the road department think that they should report to a supervisor. Individually, they should report to us as a whole, if they have a concern, this is a building, again, is my point, so. I'm saying don't let yourself caught crossways in anything that's not under your jurisdiction.
If you're gonna meet, whatever you should meet, you could do Doug's office, and so Doug's aware of everything, it's being talked about, said to, not, not individually.
And Doug was there as well.
Okay. Don't make the situation worse than it is, is my, guess my message. I didn't have anything last week. I drove by the safety meeting and I had a whole bunch of stuff to do, and I never did get back to it. Anything else to come before the good of Casoot County? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Blacker, second? Carter? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carried, we are. Thank you.
Jack, do you know for this public purpose statement, is that on their, do they have a website or anything, or is that just gonna be in their ordinance where? The proposed ordinance where it'd be available to the public, or?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's the NR one, it's in the, it's on, so, that's where it's got filled.
Did everybody read the email about your time sheets, what you turn in for mileage?
Which email was that?
That was a week.
Week ago, yeah. You're gonna be paying taxes on your mileage on.
Yeah.
But your warrant and anything you turn in for a meeting. Just remind you, it's the end of the month.
Tell me who you turn it in to, basically, is the only change your business is, if you turn it in, and taxes will be taken, so.
You sent that email, Terry?
Yes, she did.
Jack, have a good week.
Yep. See you tonight, Roger.
Yeah.
Didn't get any pictures?
I got it, Spencer.
What? Life travels, you get laid later?
Give them hell, Carter.
Oh, four eleven, it was, it was an all users, which I sorted those out.
Four eleven, yeah. And, um, I did look, did I almost understand what I was said this morning? He, he said he never got an email about the sick leave policy from the attorney. I looked and Melissa sent it out four fourteen because she copied me, and so.
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
So I don't know.
You said no.
Yeah, so I, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Let me get to that here.